Welcome to our session on the ADA Transition Plan. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Since we have a very short amount of time for tonight's work session, I'm going to go ahead and get started and ask Superintendent Guerrero to kick us off.
Thank you Chair Lowery, and good evening Directors. Thank you for dedicating a work session on an already action-packed agenda night as always. So we're going to jump right into it. We have our Chief Operating Officer, Dan Young, for those who are viewing this work session, who's going to lend more detail to the Americans with Disabilities Act and our specific transition plan moving forward. So Dan is here with members of his team, and I'm sure they'll introduce themselves as they articulate some aspects of the plan. So Dan, take it away.
All right, thank you Superintendent, and good evening Directors. Yeah, we've got short time, so I think we're going to jump in pretty quick. In your packets, you should have a copy of the draft ADA Transition Plan along with a copy of the presentation that we're going to go over tonight. And John Lyons, who is our Senior Program Manager of Design and Planning, is going to be walking us through the presentation. So I think I'll just go ahead and kick it over to John. And John, before you start, I want to make sure that we have everyone that we need for the presentation. Are we missing anyone?
It looks like we are good.
Okay, great.
Dan, before you begin, can I ask a question? In the materials, it says that we're going to be approving this at some point in time. What, when, when is that?
Yeah, great question. The intention is to bring this back pretty shortly, as early as February, but there is still opportunity for feedback and for revisions if necessary. So we'd like to do it quickly if possible, but if we need to make some changes, we're able to do that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and jump in. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, can everyone see the presentation then? Great, okay. So jumping right in, this evening we'll discuss the proposed sequence for the district's ADA Transition Plan, as well as accessibility at the district more broadly. On this latter point, and as foreshadowing, one point I may end up belaboring this evening is that the ADA Accessibility Guidelines are just one component of the complete accessibility picture for our students. So just really quickly, for detailed information on the transition plan development process, as well as documentation on barriers district-wide, you can visit pps.net/accessibility. Looking at the outline for this evening, the proposed phasing for the transition plan shouldn't be too controversial. It largely reflects our conversations from this past summer during the bond development. So I'm going to cover this topic in just a few minutes, under five minutes, I hope, and then pause for your reflections. So that's everything above the orange line here. So then we'll discuss what we learned from our community about accessibility, and not to steal any thunder from my friends in community engagement, but the community largely validated the phasing we'll discuss. However, we did learn about some key areas where we'll need to exceed our federal obligation in order to truly create space that centers on the needs of our students. So if time allows, I'd like to share some of those things in the second half of the presentation. So diving right in, the purpose of the transition plan is relatively straightforward. The document will guide the transition of our schools into full compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act Accessibility Guidelines. Today, we will review the intended outcomes of the district's transition, transition plan, and then any feedback will be incorporated into the transition plan prior to board adoption of this document. So just a reminder that our buildings are very, very old. Most of our buildings were constructed between two building booms, the first in the 1920s and then another in the 1950s. In fact, over 90% of our schools were constructed before the ADA was signed into law. So just to illustrate how far we have to go, 24 district buildings need elevators. We have over 1,600 documented barriers, and to fully transition all district buildings, it's an estimated $69 million hard cost. So including soft costs, that's over $100 million. And finally, only four district buildings are completely aligned with the Americans with Disability Act. Review of the requirements of a transition plan. We've identified barriers with the recently completed facility condition assessment. And then on the next slide, we'll discuss a sequence of barrier removal that reflects our 2020 bond and the conversations with the community from this past summer. So this is the phasing developed from the bond and subsequently supported and further detailed by our community, broken out into four phases. The work in the 2020 bond will be broken into two phases. The sequencing within the individual phases will require some flexibility in order to coordinate work with other improvements. Regardless though, we will complete work on Title I CSI, TSI, and Focus Option Schools before moving on to other schools in the district.
Can I just ask a clarifying question about this slide?
Absolutely.
Does that mean that the multi-levels, that the multi-level main floor doesn't happen? Or that the first two, Phase 1 and Phase 2, is all the school's main, main level? And then Phase 3 and Phase 4 are actually second floors and up? Or however you might.
Yeah, that's correct. So Phase 1 and 2 will address main level accessibility district-wide.
Okay.
And then Phase 3 and 4 will be Level 2, 3, 4, everything above main level.
Great, thank you.
So the years outlined here, as you see here, are somewhat conceptual. There are a lot of unknowns in play here. But speaking of Phases 1 and 2, we will likely finish main level accessibility before 2026, but we want to be conservative with these numbers. Then looking forward to future bonds, Phase 3 and 4 will likely move more slowly than Phase 1 and 2. So Phase 3 has 13 elevators and Phase 4 has 11. And elevators will govern the timeline of these phases. So we're looking at roughly 2 to 3 elevators per summer, which is more than we've completed historically, but doable from a project delivery perspective. And then final thought about elevators, before I open the floor here. Elevators are improvements we'll want to coordinate with other building improvements. So just as a really quick example, if we do an interior elevator and we construct the shaft walls out of concrete as opposed to metal studs, we, we get a lot of seismic benefit from, from doing an elevator that way. So the seismic elevator, seismic benefits from an interior elevator, excuse me, concrete shaft walls and then a roof replacement gets us well on our way to seismic safety. So these are the types of things that we'll want to be thinking about in Phase 3 and 4. So I will pause for any reflections, questions about this phasing.
Just curious about a detail. You said four buildings are only fully accessible, and yet we have five schools, or six, I think, that have been built since 1991. Four in the 2012 bond plus Rosa Parks and Forest Park.
Yep, that's a great observation. So Americans with Disabilities Act was first created in 1990. Standards were developed in 1991. They were subsequently revised in 2004, and then signed again into law in 2010. The 2010 standards were moved into Oregon Building Code in 2014. So as a rule of thumb, anything that was modernized or constructed subsequent to 2014, we can consider fully compliant. So the schools you're thinking of, the improvements we have there are very, very minor. A few handrail extensions. It's, I won't call it trivial, but it's a very, very minor.
Okay, great, thanks.
Just a question on the transition phasing. So it looks like the main level accessibility, which the bond, the board prioritized in the 2020 bond, would be completed in a five-year period, correct?
Correct.
And then, I guess I look at the other ones, and I'm concerned, and I want to have a further conversation about just that it's going to stretch out actually 20 more years until we have our buildings fully compliant. And, you know, I don't think that was, that's the expectation generally in the community. Obviously, it's a decision in the next bond, but I'd be hard pressed to agree to something that's taking us out to 2041 for full accessibility. And so I guess between now and when we're, this is brought to us for approval, want to have a further conversation about that, that timeline.
Yeah, happy, happy to have that conversation. It's, if we want to be more aggressive with this, I think it's totally doable. We'll want to be realistic with the project delivery, like what we can manage. We need to close schools for a non-trivial amount of time to get elevators installed. So we want to be sensitive to that, but I'm happy to accelerate this, this timeline. I'd be over the moon, really.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dan. Sorry. I was just going to jump in quickly with some comments. I agree with what John is saying, and I think we want to balance being aggressive, but also being realistic. We do know that elevators are very impactful to schools. They're also intensive and time-consuming, and they're very much a specialty item. Often when we do our elevator installations, we, there's only a handful of contractors that are competing for that work. So two or three a year, we think is aggressive, but achievable. If we're looking to dramatically increase that, we may have challenges with needing that. So I think we've been trying to balance what we think is, what we think is achievable, and also not over-promising and ultimately under-delivering. But happy to have that conversation further and provide some more details on where we can.
Sort of along those lines, so the slide earlier, you had, I think it was $69 million of hard costs to essentially be fully compliant, is that right? Fully transition all district buildings? And so I think that's also sort of the question. It's a balance of the timing, but also that that funding isn't there. I think what is sort of interesting to Director Brim Edwards' point is, you know, how aspirational can we be, say, about future bonds that have not yet been passed? And I guess, is this timeline sort of based both on, on timing of, of when we can sort of implement these things, but also funding levels? So for instance, and I'm blanking on how much is in this last bond for ADA accessibility.
$33.8 million.
Thank you, I couldn't find the number quickly. But if the next bond included the remaining, you know, $30, $35 to $40 million for these projects, would that speed up the timeline? Or were you sort of assuming maybe that was already the case?
I think we could speed, speed this up if we were to fund all subsequent elevators in the next bond. I think that that would be achievable, but we'd, we'd want to be really careful about what's realistic. So it's, this, this bond is $33.8 million, but that, remember, that's soft costs included. So the total amount here, we're talking about is well over $100 million, and that gets more expensive the longer we pay.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I want to agree, this is, this is a good topic to talk about, but it, it's part of our bond funding. And we have to weigh how fast we go on this with how much we spend on full modernizations, which really helps us, you know, has, has all sorts of spillover effects in terms of what we need to do going forward for seismic safety, for quality of classroom, for teaching and learning, and all those kind of other options, other, other factors. So it's something we should certainly talk about, and I'm glad Julie brought this up. But it goes, it goes into the mix of bond planning. And, you know, from walking through regular, back in the day when we were still in school, when they were, I think they took two years for the elevator. So there was, there was quite a bit of disruption to the building in that school year when the elevator was sort of half-completed. So this is, these, these are pretty major projects for our schools.
So I haven't, and maybe, maybe one of the ways to approach it, just based on this discussion, is that the Phase 1 and Phase 2, you know, we haven't known amount of money, what that buys, but the Phase 3 and Phase 4, it's more of a scoping without putting years on it, because what I, what I'm afraid that does is it predetermines like, well, we're going to take this longer amount of time versus here's the remaining work, and then have the 2024 board make that determination of, you know, what's, what's doable based on the status of the plan. But to now, but to right now, take a position that, hey, it's going to take to 2041 seems premature, and let's say I'm not comfortable with that. But it also, because we can't speak for future boards, and because it will be determined that maybe you take out the years, but indicate those, the phasing, and that's going to be decided when there's money to match the, the work to be done, just as a potential approach. I have another question.
Go for it.
This is based on having one accessible bathroom per floor? I was just trying to find where I read that. Is that, is that correct? And why wouldn't we have all, instead of having a student who needs an accessible bathroom, have them in each of the, in each of the bathrooms, having that accessibility versus just in one, one per floor? Or did I, did I read that incorrectly?
You're close. We're going to talk about that in the second half of the presentation, but the Americans with Disabilities Act, excuse me, the Americans with Disabilities Act is actually silent on the required number of restrooms. It's where we have the restrooms. There's certain accessibility requirements. So we have some supplemental standards that we're currently developing that would require an accessible restroom, and that, that means something much bigger than an ADA bathroom. So one per level. And then what we're calling a focus, focus program restroom, which is again 180 square feet, much, much larger than an ADA compliant restroom, that we would have one of those per school. But this is well outside the bounds of, excuse me, the Americans with Disabilities Act. There are no minimum number of bathrooms required.
And if I can jump in to just clarify a point that John is making is that the ADA itself is, is really kind of the minimum bar. What we are trying to aim for is something higher than that. So our overall accessibility goals are higher than just meeting the ADA standards, and, and John will get into some of those details with the rest of them.
Okay, well, I'll hold off on just a follow-up question on that. One other question, maybe this, this is not a facilities question, but maybe a programmatic question that in the, the report on page 10, it talks about that in the meantime, that there's this main level accessibility, and that in cases in which you're in a multi-level building and which it's not in this next, it's not going to be addressed in this next five years, that anything on floor, anything that's essential on floors, the second, third, and fourth, or second and third floors most likely, that the workaround or the way the district's going to address it is relying on the principal to make adjustments. And it seems like a pragmatic solution, but I'm just wondering whether that's really a push, a push-off of from the central responsibilities on to like, hey, the principal's just got to make it work in terms of scheduling. So I'm wondering, and again, maybe this is somebody from the programmatic side versus the building side, but you know, what, how much the workaround are we expecting principals to do in order to meet sort of our basic obligations for those, those essential spaces that aren't going to be addressed in the first, the first two phases?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. So I can speak a little bit about this. So we basically have three options to make a program accessible. We can remove barriers, that's what we're looking at here. We can move program, and that's what you brought up. We, so we can take a, an English classroom that's on the second floor, and we can move it to the main level, or we can move students. And we do some combination of all three of those things right now. So it, the reason here, looking at Phase 3, that we're prioritizing middle schools and K8s over elementary schools, that if you look at the ed specs, the requirements for an eighth grade science classroom are intensive, and we just, we won't be able to shift programs around as easily as we will be able to in elementary schools.
Thank you.
So we'll have some more opportunity for questions. I might recommend, John, that you proceed with kind of the second part, and then we can go back and answer any questions when we get towards the end.
Yeah, sounds good. So with that, I'll ask if Noelle's out there somewhere in the abyss, and if she could unmute and take it from here.
Hi, John. Noelle is in the other participant's side, so she can unmute herself.
Paulina, do you want to speak to the slide, or I'm happy to as well?
Well, we can move Noelle over from the attendees. Kara can bring her.
She's on her way.
Great, thanks Kara.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Oh, okay, I can't see anything, but thank you, Paulina. And so I've been listening, I apologize. I couldn't quite figure out how to get out of that abyss I was just in. So John worked with the Community Engagement Department, and they reached out to these community partners, of which both Paulina and I have had the pleasure of either working for them or working with them over the last eight years. So Community Vision is the first icon you see, and that is a organization, a nonprofit. They reside now on like 17th and Division in what is called Seven Corners Collaborative, where these other two organizations you see reside along with six others. And so they are a fully universally designed building. It is a very amazing structure. They're right across from that New Seasons there, if you get to visit it. They have an assistive technology lab that is incredible, where people can go in if they experience disability and need some adaptive equipment or things to make their life more accessible. They, you can trial them before paying for them. And so they represent mostly adults with disabilities in Oregon. Yep, sorry, you're going to hear my daughter in the background, who works with them as well. And they support individuals with developmental disabilities and having access to equitable, equitable employment, equitable independent living options that are not in congregate settings, which is how they got their start. So universal design is a big passion of Joe, who is their executive director. And then in fact, Oregon is Oregon's Parent Training and Information Center. That is a federal grant out of the, yep, the Special Education Office at the federal level. And every state has one, and that is where I started my career and ended as a director there five years ago. And that is where Paulina and I met and got to work statewide together, and now have the pleasure of having her as a PPS employee. And they specialize in making sure that families understand their rights within the special education process, and make sure that families who experience disability are not being isolated within their lives and are really good at connecting those community organizations and families together. And then the Oregon Council on Developmental Disabilities, I just actually ended my eight-year term with them. That is a governor-appointed committee and council at the state level, and their charge is to oversee the DD Act. And that makes sure that people with disabilities are living within community, having self-determination, making sure that people with disabilities have the same equitable access to a whole life, just like the rest of us. So making sure that they are able to access equitable employment at a paying rate as opposed to a sub-minimum wage, like many do, making sure that they have access to independent living if they so choose, as opposed to congregate settings, making sure that they have equitable access to anything in their life and relationships and whatnot. And that is a cross-department kind of council. So it has family members, which is like what Paulina and I would represent. It has ODE, it has USAD, it has OHSU, it has developmental disability. All the different partners are represented on that council. So they were wonderful partners to have as input on this process. And then when, within PPS, myself and Paulina were able to reach out to family members. Sorry, was that a question or someone not on mute? I can't see myself or anyone else. So I think we're ready for the next slide.
There you go.
Thank you, John. And, and so we reached out to community partners, as you saw, and that's who we worked with and who we'll probably continue working with going forward. We held three virtual town halls, a public review draft of the transition plan with a comment form, and then we did Spanish language interviews. And so Paulina, when I started working with her on these town halls, was actually a fact employee. And then as she transitioned to a PPS employee, which I'm very excited about, she supported the Spanish language interviews. And among the information that we got from those engagement opportunities were many. I'm afraid to touch my screen, so I can't get to my notes, but we had great representation as far as community members go. We had families who were raising students with disabilities. We had people from the BIPOC community who both represented where racial equity and disability intersected, along with a woman who is an amazing advocate within that community, along with breaking down ableism within our schools. We had people who experienced disability join the forum, which is most important, because many of us as advocates can advocate to the moon and back, but what matters most is that we're listening to the voices of those who actually experience what we are trying to build accessibility around. So it was great, and one of them was a former student of PPS, and it was great to have that input. And the themes that came out of these community engagement opportunities were, are the four things you're seeing here. And so kind of like what you were talking about earlier, Dan and John, around the ADA can often be that kind of bare minimum standard of how to build accessibility. But what we want to do is to build intentional accessibility, so including playgrounds that are accessible to all. So great stories kind of came out of that opportunity of, including as a parent myself and Paulina, both having children who, as young ones, didn't necessarily access the same type of playground as their peers, and what that can feel like. And so some of our participants shared really meaningful stories around the fact that if the person with the mobility disability is always below, and everyone else can climb to the top, what kind of hierarchy does that teach children as we move forward in society? And kind of that, like leaving behind that weakest link, and that's not fair. So we want to make sure that we're building things that are accessible to all, and also building the intentionality of breaking down those. Once the physical building is open, you want to break down the attitudal barriers that we often experience with people with disabilities. So not only are they allowed in the building, are they accepted, included, and embraced, and given a table and a voice at the table once they're there? And so playgrounds popped up, because those are often the places where children learn so many things outside the classroom and relationships. Restrooms popped up, just a second, baby. So the idea that an accessible restroom may not be something where you have space if you need someone to come in and assist you. So if I bring my child into an accessible restroom, but there isn't adequate space for me to assist her there, that isn't, that may be ADA compliant, but it is not best practice within accessibility and what we can do as a district to build dignity in that. Acoustics popped up, so especially for students with neurodiversity and sensory issues, and sensory. and sensory support needs, making sure that our spaces are sensitive to that. And I would kind of add lighting to that as well. I noticed that popped up as well. And then access, and we often popped back to that intentional access. So making sure that making a building accessible doesn't mean that that access point is different than the main access point that everyone else gets to go into, that it's not by the dumpster, that it's not by the service elevator, things like that. So building dignity and accessibility in that way, which does go beyond the ADA, but is always the right thing to do. So those were the themes that popped up that we, in this phase one, phase two, community engagement piece.
Thank you, Noel. So we, we've got about 10 minutes left. And if everyone's open to it, I'd like to just go through and break down those four items bit by bit to just tell you exactly what the federal guidelines say. So what the ADA will get us with respect to these four things, what we heard from our community, just to echo Noel a little bit, and then a recommended path forward. But one thing I want to be really clear about is the transition plan is oriented towards our federal obligations. So it's only item one. It'll, so for that reason, it will only take us so far towards our values. Fortunately, in addition to the transition plan, we have three additional documents that will offer further guidance on the nature of the built environment at our schools. And then we happen to be developing all three right now. So we have a unique opportunity to harmonize these documents on the issue of accessibility. So for the remainder of this discussion, I'll speak about the ed spec as the primary instrument to communicate our values about the, the built environment. And I hope to bring this document to you, the board, in June this year. Jumping right in, playgrounds, federal requirements for playgrounds, it's basically surfaces for wheels. There's nothing about the equipment that needs to be accessible. Per federal standards, we have to get to the play equipment, but nothing else. What we heard from our community to echo Noel is that playgrounds are where kids learn to be with one another. They are a primary instrument of social learning. And the more independence and inclusion we can offer, the better these spaces will be for all students. So we've hired a landscape architecture firm to help us develop a set of guidelines that will be integrated in the ed spec and design standards. These standards will outline clear but flexible inclusion performance requirements. And so moving forward, all improvements to playgrounds will meet these standards in whole or in part. So moving forward, all playgrounds at PPS will be inclusive. And we're defining that as the coolest thing on the playground is accessible by everyone. That's to remove that hierarchy that Noel spoke about. Want to show you three examples of what inclusive play looks like. So these play spaces support a variety of physical and sensory abilities. So you see the sand here. We're going to check in with our maintenance and custodial folks to see what they're comfortable with. But lots of, lots of different support. Importantly, there are no territories in these spaces where someone who, who uses a wheelchair can't access. So no social, social segregation happening. Music also a big component, just so we, we address multiple forms of manifestations of disability. This is in Towelton Hills. And last example, Cootch Park, just east of Metropolitan Learning Center. If you're familiar with this playground, it's about the right scale would work for us, eighteen thousand square feet. The firm we've hired to help us with our standards also designed this playground. So moving on to restroom, so I am Director Berman Edwards. If I don't address your question here, let's stop and talk through this a little further. So the Americans with Disabilities Act Accessibility Guidelines does not address the number of toilet rooms or fixtures required for a building. It's only where we do have them, there are certain requirements that, that they need to adhere to. So an ADA restroom can be as small as thirty-five square feet. What we heard from our community is that federal accessibility requirements are insufficient to meet the needs of our students. And the ADA requirements often assume normative upper body strength. So that is the ability to transfer yourself independently from your chair to a toilet. We typically have in the restroom with a student, two adults, motorized wheelchair, an adjustable change table and mechanical lift. So thirty-five square feet isn't cutting it. So we will, we will meet the, the ADA in, in key areas, but we will also exceed them by providing one accessible restroom per level. So an accessible restroom is one hundred square feet. And then we will provide one focus program restroom per building. So focus program should be located with our spec classrooms and it's about a hundred and eighty square feet. Just pause here. I know I'm going really quick. There are any questions? Groovy. Okay.
You want me to ask my question?
Go for it. Yeah.
And before I ask my question, I just want to say about the playgrounds. I think that's so great. Play is like the great equalizer. And if you've ever seen the kids playing at Harper's Playground, you'll see the joy is universal on a well-designed playground. So I want to start with that positive. On the bathrooms, while I understand that we're going beyond the federal requirements, again, I would just ask the question about if we only have one per level, is that going to create a really accessible solution for, for students? I mean, all of our buildings are so unique that I can just imagine that you may have one on a level, but it's nowhere near where the student actually, the classes are. And where we make, obviously for the students accommodations, that there's bathrooms all over the place. Or like they're at least spread out that I, I guess I'm curious about why we wouldn't try and have at least the standard of where there's bathrooms available to all students, that there also would be an accessible bathroom versus just one per level.
Yeah, that's, that's something we could discuss. I don't think I'm, would be able to make a general statement about district-wide, we could commit to that just because we're working, when we're, we're working in our existing buildings, there's a space budget. So we increase the bathrooms, we're taking that space away from something else.
Can I ask a question? So are you saying one per level, like one per floor?
Yes.
So when you're looking at, just to add, I'm not completely sure on our demographics because I know we have, or I see them on paper, but how they spread out into our buildings. But I know we have like an intensive skills classroom, right? Where that may be where more people would reside, who would need that type of accessible restroom. Since we're still building those inclusive, you know, experiences when in our school, we still have those classrooms. So that one would always have that. But when you're looking at physical disabilities and developmental disabilities, it is usually one, just above one percent of the population. So the necess, the necessity for more than one per level probably wouldn't rise to that need. Because also an accessible restroom could be accessed by someone who, if you have grab bars and are able to transfer yourself, then you can use just the accessible restroom. But if we're building one where the person requires a support person in there, then that is the bigger restroom we're talking about. And as far as statistics go, you probably wouldn't rise to more. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question, Julia?
Somewhat. And we don't, we need to have a long, I can
Okay.
More in-depth discussion, because I'm not sure if may, because it sounds like there's two types of accessible bathrooms. One that I take a, a larger amount of space and then one, which I think is more what people would think of as an accessible bathroom, just usually like in commercial spaces where there's multiple bathrooms, there are, there is one of those per pod of bathrooms. So, but we can talk about that more later.
This size, what you're pict, yeah, what you're picturing is like a hoayor lift, like something that is going to support a person to get from their chair to the toilet. Does that make sense? So you just need that extra space for the equipment that resides in there along with the support person.
Request earlier on to sort of make sure we ended our time. And I know we're not done with the presentation and I know there are some other board members who have questions. So can we, is it okay if we move on and finish the presentation, then allow for some other questions?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So always happy to talk restrooms, always happy to talk acoustics too, but I'm going to skip over acoustics and just point you to Kellogg Middle School, who's nailed it on acoustics. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. Access, I'm also going to skip, I'm going to go through really quickly, actually. So thorough requirements, sixty percent of public unrestricted entrances must be accessible. No concession for existing buildings. This is an area where we're going to continue our community engagement. So we're going to check in with, with individual schools as we move forward in phase one and two to really diagram and understand the needs of access. This is going to be a coordinated effort between transportation, the main office and security.
Hey, John, could you explain that no concession? I didn't understand what that meant.
So in, in building code, but not federal regulation, when you make an improvement, according to building code, you only have to do one accessible entrance. But per federal code, those are not the same thing. You still, all buildings have to have sixty percent unrestricted entrances must be accessible. So, go ahead.
Yeah, it was the no concession for existing buildings. I, I didn't understand what, quite what that phrase meant.
So our buildings aren't grandfathered in, for example. So we, we have to meet that sixty percent.
Okay.
Regardless of whether it's new construction or
Okay.
Existing structure. Yeah, good. So cruising on ahead here. Just want to speak a little bit about universal design, and I'm going to do this under ninety seconds. So to end this evening, the forthcoming version of the ed spec will be rooted in the principles discussed on the right here. I just want to share two examples in an attempt to demystify the concept of universal design. Because I think it's, I think mystified in a lot of conversations and it doesn't need to be so. So the door actuator at the left is an example of universal design. The push mechanism extends from the top of the bar to just above the ground, presenting a wider possible reach range than a typical button actuator. That's why tolerance benefits those with complex bodily states who may not have the arm strength to press the single button actuator. And something else we heard in our community meetings is that in the context of the current pandemic, no one wants to touch door handles. So able-bodied people are opening their feet to depress a typical door actuator. And then of course, someone with disability, you get the idea. Actuators, like you see here, are not required per federal standards or Oregon building code. But two-point actuators are required by California building code. So we're going to adopt that. We're, we're going to require entrances have the two-point actuator moving forward. The last example I want to talk about, this image is from Grant High School, and I, I hope it looks mundane to you. It is, and that's the point. Universal design is not a niche design concern, but it can be as simple as the flexibility offered by loose seating and tables set out of variety of heights. So given what we heard from our community, our mandate is to elevate the principles of universal design in order to access a deeper dimension of accessibility and create spaces centered on the dignity of our students. So I will pause again for your questions. I apologize for the blitz there, but I want to make sure that they have time to get it by team before the rest of your evening.
Thanks, John. I know that Director Moore had a question. And could we pop back out into gallery view so I can
Yeah.
sort of use some of those visual cues to see what else has questions. Director Moore?
Um, so sorry, I had audio issues as usual. I had a question about internal versus external elevators. And it may be a bigger question than we have time for tonight. But it, I think it would be helpful for us to understand the advantages and disadvantages of both. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think to date, we have tended, I think we've almost exclusively put add-on elevators on the exterior wall rather than interior. Is that accurate?
It's, it's been a mixed bag. I would say there are more exterior elevators than interior. Yes, you're correct.
Okay. So I'm just thinking that there, there may be some trade-offs around cost and time and, and all of that. And I was not aware that an interior elevator conferred some seismic benefits. So anyway, I, I think this is probably a longer conversation than we can accommodate tonight. Can I send you an email with some questions?
Absolutely. Always happy to talk elevators.
Okay.
Rooms, elevators and acoustic. That's great. This could be your new podcast, John.
Absolutely.
Really? Do you have a question?
Yeah. So one of this is really exciting and great work and great community engagement. Two, the things that you, particularly in the second half that we've been talking about are, we're looking at building those into ed specs. That's really for future construction or renovation? Or is it as opposed to one-off projects? And, and would need to be, have a funding stream of its own in terms of bonds going forward. Is that correct?
That's generally correct. When we're expanding restrooms for phase one and two of the, the ADA transition plan, we're going to do everything we can to meet those target space requirements that are outlined in the ed spec. But again, we're on a space budget there. If we're making the restroom larger, we're taking space away from something else.
Yeah, really hard to retrofit into an existing structure.
Totally, yeah.
Any other questions from directors?
I just want to thank the staff because it's not only a wonderful opportunity in this bond to be able to do so much of this accessibility work, but to have the roadmap going forward. Dan, this has been a long journey. We've been talking about this for a long time. And, you know, aside from the maybe frustration or, or reality of how long it may take to actually implement all of these changes for all of our decrepit old buildings, just knowing what we need to do and creating a strategy for how we're going to get to it is so important. And by the way, we've been legally bound to have that as well. So that's a nice bonus. But I just want to thank everybody who has continued to advocate through the years for, you know, making sure that we don't lose sight of these, these obligations and these, these civil rights. And it's exciting. Thank you very much.
I, you know, share some of Director Berman Edwards frustration that we can't make this all happen way faster. My, I'm being told my internet connection is unstable, so I apologize. But I really appreciate the work and I love, I think, just so inherent in all the design pieces is the thoughtfulness. And that, John, I really appreciate you saying that the ADA is, is where we start from and that what our students need and deserve is more than that. And Noel, I really appreciate a lot of what you said around that too of how do we really think about what our students need to be successful? And that idea that, you know, this, the, the design we do is not, it's for everyone. And I especially, I, I've been to that, to Grant, to that area in the photograph. And it really is a place for all people, which, which is so exciting about how PPS is thinking really thoughtfully about how we can really create spaces outdoors in bathrooms that are for all of our students. So thank you for that work. And, you know, if we can wave a magic wand and somehow, you know, get it all done sooner, that'd be great. But I know we're balancing lots of, of competing priorities and the fact that, you know, closing a building and adding an elevator really is a huge disruption. So how do we, how do we sequence that work given the capacity of what we have? Any other questions or comments before we close our time tonight?
Can I just ask a process question? So when it comes back to the board, will we have a chance to look at the, whatever the next draft is based on this discussion, other another input that may be provided and then have an opportunity to have a discussion before it gets finalized?
I'll, I'll jump in here. I think it sounds like there are some questions about the, the timing and the phasing. So I think it makes sense for us to prove, put together some more detail around that, some more thought around that. And, and I can reach out to the board office, the best way to communicate that before. The best way to communicate that before we come back to the full board for approval, so that we know that there's the comfort level there, uh, before we bring it back to the full board. So if that, if that sounds like an okay plan, uh, I will take that for.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you all so much, everyone. It's five fifty-five. We're going to adjourn this work session. And I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to start the board meeting right at six oh five. So I'll give us a little bit of time to, to grab a bite, do a bio break, walk the dogs, whatever you need to do. And we'll hop right back on at six oh five, uh, at the other link. Make sure you go into your email where it says, um, board meeting reminder in an hour and click on the, um, join link there. And that'll get you straight into a panelist, so you don't have to go through the attendees link. All right, bye, everyone.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you.